Okay, good evening and welcome to the December 11th, 2023, meeting of the Town and Barnstable Planning Board. My name is Steve Robichaud. The meeting this evening is being held at Barnstable Town Hall, 367 Main Street, Hyannis, Mass, in the James H. Crocker Jr. Hearing Room. We're on the second floor and it's 7:00 PM. We're beginning tonight's meeting by holding a joint meeting with the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission. The meeting notice has been previously filed with the town clerk in accordance with Mass. General Law. All materials may be accessed through the Planning Board website or by contacting Karen Pena at karen.pena@town.barnstable.us or calling 508-862-4064. And Cheryl, I'll turn it to you to call your meeting to order.
Okay, so I have a call to need to order for the HHDC, the Hyannis Main Street and Waterfront Historic District Commission. Commissioner Dougherty.
Here.
Commissioner Crowley.
Here.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
I also, Cheryl Powell, am also here. We are missing three members tonight. Commissioner Cronin, Commissioner Kay, and Commissioner Hinckley need them, but we do have five, therefore we have quorum plus one.
Excellent, thank you very much. And we will now call the Planning Board meeting to order and introduce our board members, starting with Matthew.
Matt Teague, good evening.
And Michael.
Michael Messinas, good evening.
Tim.
Good evening, Tim O'Neil.
Mary.
Good evening, Mary Barry.
Bob.
Bob Twish, good evening.
And again, my name is Steve Robichaud, and we also have two staff members with us. Karen?
Sorry, Karen Pena, Planning and Development.
Thank you, and Jim.
Jim Cuffer, Assistant Director, Planning and Development, thank you.
Excellent, thank you both. Notice of recording, this meeting will be televised live via Xfinity, Channel 8, or High Definition, Channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel livestream on the Town of Barnstable's website, And our first item this evening, again, is the Unified Downtown Hyannis Design Guidelines and Regulations. Mary, would you mind reading that agenda item? And get that going?
Sure. This is for the Unified Downtown Hyannis Design Guidelines and Regulations. In accordance with Section 240-24.1.3.2 (A), the Planning Board shall review proposed amendments to the design and infrastructure plan. This is a continuation from the November 27th, 2023 Planning Board meeting.
Thank you very much, Mary, and I will note that we have a continued public hearing, so the public hearing is open. And we're going to start off with a presentation from Jim Cuffer. Jim?
Good evening, thank you all for joining back up. We've had a lot of good feedback from our last meeting, a lot of feedback from the Board and Commission during our November meeting, as well as some great public feedback during the meeting and following that meeting. So what you have in your packet this evening is, once again, an updated red line reflecting the changes requested, as well as some, again, I think, great feedback from the general public in terms of the last iteration. For the public's understanding, as well as anyone watching at home, just wanted to quickly recap the process again. Back in early of 2023, we were in receipt of a grant to update these design guidelines. That a grant was submitted as a response to comments from this commission and the Board about updating our standards for design regulations and guidelines. In March 23rd of 2023, we kicked off a joint meeting, much like this evening, however, that was Zoom. And we started the discussion of the process and what the final deliverable may look like. We then put together multiple walking tours all around downtown Hyannis to understand the highlights of the good, the bad, the essential qualities that this district has, and provided feedback to our consulting team, an architecture firm, Util Architecture, that assisted us in drafting these design guidelines. In May, we provided that outline back to the Commission and Board for their first feedback. And then again, back in July, we had further feedback on a more of a refined outline of the guidelines and regulations, starting to formulate what ultimately you see here tonight. In August, we sought permission from the Commission and the Board to put the draft guidelines out for public comment and extended that actually into mid-May, after a number of stakeholders requested more time, most notably the Greater Hyannis Civic Association, asking for a little bit more time to provide feedback, and that seemed to make a world of sense. So we did that, so, you know, for about a month and a half out there in the public. Then in October, we returned the draft guidelines back to the Commission and Board. November, we had, I think, a great conversation about what that document looked like and how we could make it maybe a little bit better. And now tonight, you have before you that draft document for the red line again, providing the input that was provided to the Commission and the Board and the public. So if I may, I will quickly go through that draft a little bit quicker than last time. I know the Planning Board does have a full agenda beyond this, so I won't extend as much time as previous, but I do want to touch on a number of highlights of this red line document. So, as we proceed forward, let's see, so you have it on your small screen, you have it in paper form, and you have it on the big screen, though that is a little light.
And Jim, just a quick pause.
Yep.
Any board members or commissioners at any time, please stop, Jim, if any questions or comments come up. We don't need to wait until he finishes, so please just unmute and go right ahead.
So on page four, there was a request to provide a little bit of clarity, and we rearranged the sentence to read, "The unified document provides clear guidance for applicants and property owners. Eliminating that creates a clear consistent path forward for each applicant." That adds the applicant, the property owners, kind of giving a little sense of who this document is for. And as you see, it restarts that next sentence as "it includes reference to." This is just, again, in the introduction to the document there. As we proceed on, on page 15. Page 15, under "Design Standards Review Applicability." As we discussed at the last meeting, adding that the administrative review, that again, I do want to clarify is for, no, does not involve substantial change, it is changes that are replacement in kind, in size, color, material, are administrative reviewed if they fall within the historic district. And that administrative review is an appointment by the Chair, so it could be the Chair themselves, could be a member of the Commission, or it could be a staff member. But that appointment from the Chair is also then voted on by the entire Commission to make sure that everyone's in agreement. Next page, "How to Use the Design Guidelines." Again, I think this was stressed at the last meeting, just clarifying that when overlapping jurisdiction, the Planning Board shall also require the applicable regulations when considering special permit applications, and again, inserting special permit applications in that third paragraph. On page 20, we begin to start digging into those regulations and guidelines. And on the regulations, we moved that exterior installation and finish systems. I know the Board had a really good conversation about whether or not to prohibit, and ultimately, it was discussed that you would allow it potentially in the guidelines, but under proper installation, and you'll see that later on here. We've taken that from the regulation and dropped it in the guidelines there. The next page, we talk about public comment regarding window glass and the reflectiveness of the glass. So we've added some language furthering that discussion in the fenestration chapter and window screens as well. We've also added further down a discussion of rooftop mechanicals. Now, it is required for it to be screened already, but reiterating it here, I think, is important, as well as adding that language for telecommunications. In the next section, as you may recall, fairly robust conversation about balconies. So we've added some language, just talking about proposed proper assurance should be in place to confirm all exterior items are properly secured. And then again, the next section, we're talking about screening mechanicals, expressly adding that language about telecommunications. In the next section, we add an example of green roof, so we had a really good conversation about whether or not we should encourage, and I think, I believe, the Commission and the Board landed on yes, that we should encourage. So we've added an example of green roof, and then also some language there to encourage green roofs where possible on flat roofs. Following that, oh, sorry, under facade treatments, this is where we move that EIF system and place it under the guidelines. So we've also added a little bit of language about stucco, too. If you recall, we didn't want to completely write off stucco, so it may be considered, but through careful installation. Next section, we talk about, sorry, page 28, moving right along to windows. Again, a really good conversation about whether or not to expressly require certain windows, and ultimately, it was decided to make sure that there is some guidance there about size and shape of windows shall be appropriate scale in relation to the proposed massing and its historic surroundings. Onto frontage types. We discuss again, inserting a little bit of clarity on the tintness of windows and the transparency, and illuminated storefront windows and streetscape lighting to help create an appropriately scaled pedestrian environment. So again, trying to light up that public space. Removing, under lighting fixtures, removing the specific language of period replica, but looking at the fixtures themselves in the context of site-specific and what makes sense, giving some guidance to the Commission. Next, we have, under the landscaping, a lot of good comments about making sure that we assure that native species are planted in the district. And so you'll see several locations where we add the word "native" or "native shade" into there. On page 37, we start getting into design guideline, or, excuse me, for parking. And on page 37, we talk about, well, we start talking about outdoor loading facilities, including docks and areas. That's already in there, but we've added just some specifics about trash or recycling to make sure that we try our best to get them out of visibility of the public way. And we give some guidance as to where those should be located, you know, as far back as possible, essentially. Again, moving on, in the vegetation, talking about native species lighting. If you recall, the recommendation is downward lighting, and that's almost throughout the entire district, except for when we're talking about lighting up that pedestrian area. So opportunities to light those alleyways, those decorative trees out there. Those are things that, you know, won't necessarily shield down, so it contradicts a little bit, but I think in an appropriate way. Down-facing lighting and things like parking lots in other areas, so not to spill over to other properties, but, you know, decorative lighting in ways in which we can enliven the public space. We'll be walking that fine line, but it will be up to the Commission to, you know, use discretion where possible. We add further on that page, solar canopy, talking about solar canopy systems over parking areas. There was a lot of good discussion regarding that, and ultimately, I believe we landed on it being discouraged, but if it was to be constructed to limit its visibility from the public way. Moving on to 39, talking about, again, furthering landscaping, making sure that we have solid, we have street trees where possible, all up and down the district, so looking at requirements and properly, proper installation, and proper trees of a proper caliber. So the language there. In landscaping, again, some more native references, but actually calling out the use of artificial turf is not allowed. That was a very appropriate addition there. Continuing on, just some descriptives, again, native species, and adding in potential opportunities for rain gardens where possible. Adding some, just clarifying statements in terms of the locations, including crosswalks for lighting and wayfinding signage, just some clarity there. Moving down, just a few edits in the sign section on page 49. You know, specifically calling out that that one with the big red X is not recommended. And just some clarifying language to better restructure that sentence under projecting signs. Same with freestanding signs, a little bit of clarity, I think. Really solid offering of edits for these two locations. In terms of single signs, should be a coordinated set of signs in size, style, and background colors. I think that is much clearer than the previous language, similar for under the canopy signs, some clarity. And then, so that's the red line edits, but also want to make note, I know Laura's not here, but she was the one that specifically called out on page nine the picture that was during the COVID years, and perhaps we could use a better picture of current Main Street. And so I dug up this one on our communications team, so thank you to the communications team for providing. Thought that was a really good addition there. So with that, oh, and one other item. So, not reflected in the red line, but what I would like to offer you, and you have before you tonight, is, so on page 18, so again, this is the first step in the building design regulations. There it is. Building design regulations, as you may recall, earlier iterations asked for some introduction to basically provide guidance to any reader as to what, you know, what we're truly looking for in our design regulations and guidelines. And so spelling out in the intro, and then furthering with specificity some regulations on that intro regulation page, to really define the rhythm of the streetscape, and, you know, how it's phrased at the bottom, "The compositional rhythm created by the strategies above shall reflect and continue the cadence and scale of facades on the street." I think really is well done, and as one of the public members had brought forward at our last meeting, a really nice graphic as to what that could look like in pictorial form. So at the request of the Chair, I went back and asked our consultant, who did that original design, and they provided a more appropriate one that you have in your packet tonight. A more appropriate one, the earlier iteration that you saw actually was five stories and some things that we likely wouldn't consider here in Hyannis. So I asked them to make it more refined for Hyannis, dropping the stories down, making them varied in height, and, you know, having dormers and setbacks and the like. So I thought this would be a great insert to rate after, in paragraph A, just after paragraph A, before little A, if the group agrees. And with that, I'll turn it back to the Chairs for any questions or comments.
Great, very well done, Jim, and I think that this diagram here, this drawing, is definitely, would be a great addition. Also love the picture that was added on page nine, it's a beautiful picture, especially this time of year. So, at this time, I think it would make sense to go to the board members and the commissioners. All right, and see if we have questions for Jim, comments?
First off, I wanted to say that I think you and your team, Jim, have done a great job on this, thank you very much.
Well said, agreed.
I just want one clarification, I didn't come up with last time, and that is the native shade. I know that Conservation has a list of things they recommend, but of course, that's for conservation areas. Is there an actual list on native shade, or do we need to come up with one?
Right, so we do have a few individuals in our office that are well-versed in landscaping, and they worked with me on the native landscaping list. We can certainly go back through, there's a list in the back there that has some native.
I saw some of those.
Yeah, so, you know, and we could certainly be, we could certainly edit that list over time, too. You know, I think ideally, natives, just ultimately achieving native species in our landscaping. We work with Conservation, but we also work with a few folks in our office that are well-versed in that. I am not one of them.
Excellent, thank you. Any other commissioner?
I have a question.
Commissioner Dougherty?
Hey, Jim, Tom Dougherty, great job. In the last meeting, we brought up on the building and design regulations a maximum length of a building before we had a separation. That's not in any of the guidelines. Is there any reason for that? I was thinking more like 400 feet is the guideline, than a separation of a building and then a new building.
Right, so, yeah, so we brought that up at the last meeting in discussion of length of building. In the zoning, it's, I believe, 180 feet before a setback. So I think what you're referencing potentially is a separate foundation, right? So a separate building in and of itself. So that might be a bigger conversation to have. I would be, I'm uncertain how many parcels on Main Street are 400 linear feet in length. You know, there's two that are, that have recently gone through that I don't believe quite meet that. And so, and most of the other lots are significantly smaller.
I didn't say it had to be 400 feet, you know, it could be 200 feet. You know, TD Bank is like 392 feet. I'm just saying, there should maybe some type of guideline of when we're going to have a new foundation, instead of just having a row of apartments.
Yeah, that's certainly something that the Commission and Board could take up. I mean, as of right now, how it's specified is, this actually kind of shrinks it a little bit, but in the, yeah, again, in the zoning, it calls for with a setback, which is different than what Mr. Dougherty is referencing there.
Isn't that kind of covered on page 18, speaking about the, you know, facade, no wider than 50 feet, without a change in roof shape, height, and change in material or interruption of the wall plane?
It really doesn't say a separate foundation, though.
Now, why is that important?
I just don't like just a row of buildings, it's got to be a separation.
Oh, oh, I see, you're saying, yeah, I see what you mean.
Just like, you know, you look at this apartment, you know, this picture, you know, it's just a row, it looks like to me just rows of apartments, where you want a little separation, you know, open space, you know, parks. Some area except just a row of buildings.
Understood.
It's also covered on page 19, where it has the setbacks here as well. But I understand what you're saying.
And also, one other question on the administration review. There's going to be a list of things that are going to go through, that'll be approved by the administration review, like windows, siding, roofing?
So as it's defined here, it is relegated only to, "Shall review all ordinary maintenance, repair, repainting, or replacement of any exterior building or site feature within the district, which does not involve a substantial change in design, material, color, or outward appearance for compliance with this document. Replacement shall be in kind, in size, color, and material only." So it's.
Thank you.
And just for the public, if you wouldn't mind, Jim, just to clarify the word "replacement," so it's not, people do not have to go and change everything that they already have? It's when it comes up for replacement or for new design?
Right, so, I mean, the practical aspect of this is if someone on Main Street has a window they need to replace, and it's exactly the same window, they don't need to wait a month and put filing fees and notice to neighbors to say, "I'm replacing my exact same window with this exact same window."
Jim, does the zoning call out what Tom was referring to?
So the zoning, again, does reflect similar to what page 18 and 19 discuss, except for, in the zoning, it's a little bit more so. Here, we're kind of refining it a little bit to allow for some more interaction, some further setbacks, stuff like that.
But in the zoning, there's no actual limit to the foundation length, say?
Right, so it's codified in other ways, in terms of 80% of the frontage is required to actually run along the frontage of the property. So again, we're trying to mimic the historic pattern of Main Street Hyannis. So if you walk down much of these, Main Street, the length of the frontage is 100% in a lot of places. So we've pulled that back to 80% with a secondary frontage of no more than, I believe, 40%. So, no, it does not, it does not reflect in terms of, on the same lot, they shall require two separate. This actually, for the first time, gives an opportunity for two buildings to be on one lot, however. Prior to the rezoning, you could only have one principal structure on a lot. So this now gives you opportunity for two structures, but it doesn't require two structures on a lot.
Yeah, understood. Okay, going to our Board, questions, comments? Matthew, anything? All set? Michael?
I'm all set, thank you.
Tim?
All set, thank you.
Mary?
All set.
Bob?
Thanks, I just want to also commend the staff and the consultants and the folks on the Historical Board, who are the experts in this area, as well as the members of our Planning Board, who have expertise in these areas, which are people other than myself, so I want to commend all those folks, but beyond that, I have no questions.
Thank you, Bob, well said, I'll echo what Bob said. You know, staff, our consultant, Planning Board, Commission, have spent the better part of this year working on this through many, many meetings, even a walking tour of Hyannis, which was great. So, yeah, the result speaks for itself, it's definitely very well done. Any other commissioners, any questions, comments, before we go to public comment? Okay?
Ms. Pavan, you okay?
Yeah.
All set?
I have to be careful when I can't see people.
Okay, so, we'll go ahead and go to public comment this time, a few things about public comment. Obviously, looking for new comments this evening, all comments made prior are on the record, and we don't need to repeat what has been said before. Planning Board does three minutes per speaker, same as other boards, like the Commission, Town Council. I'm very lenient about this, certainly, you know, if you go over, that's okay, but, you know, getting to four or five minutes, I'll definitely be saying something, encouraging people to wrap up. Want to keep our comments obviously relevant to, you know, what we're speaking about this evening, which is the Unified Design Guidelines and Regulations, we're not talking about zoning here this evening. And just want to state that this public hearing and this agenda item is not in reference to any particular property. I give an example, should 307 Main Street be brought up by the public? I feel it would be inappropriate for any of us to discuss that, as there's an active appeal. Okay, so, just keep that in mind.
Can I echo also with regard to the HHDC? No specific application should really be brought up, in my opinion, especially when there's possibility that it could still be active or be dealt with again. It's just simply keep everything squeaky clean, please.
Sure, that makes sense, appreciate that, Cheryl. So with that, if we could have the first member of the public come on up, state your name for the record, and sign in, and we'll go from there. Good evening, welcome, thank you.
Just give me a moment to sign this sheet, please.
Take your time, thank you.
Thank you for signing it and remembering to. So, good evening, everyone, thank you for your service to our community. My name is Catherine Campos-Ledeck, you can call me Kathy, except when my mother's mad at me, you know, she calls me Catherine. I live in the village of Barnstable. If I may please ask the two Chairs, if you can confirm that you received the comments that I submitted? It was a rather lengthy document, I want to make sure that you all received that.
We did, yes, all members did, and thank you very much for that.
Great, thank you very much, I did review the guidelines in great detail. I feel really strongly that the draft of these urban design guidelines is a big step forward from the 2012 document that is being used today. But it is worrisome that it took 11 years for us to get to this point. I recommend that going forward, a clear commitment for a regularly scheduled update is established, and that this schedule is part of the final motions when the document is approved. At the very least, I recommend that this be every three to five years. Of course, there could be some regulatory issue that comes down from the state that we have to act on, but at the very least, I would say it'd be every three to five years. So I recommend that. So I recommend that this be included in the introduction section of the document. I think it's a great document, but I do feel that there is more work to be done. I recognize that a lot of time and effort has been put forward to come up with this draft document. My interest is in making sure that these guidelines are good to go and that they will not generate more questions resulting in the back and forth and back and forth on design for a site with a developer. Remember, from a developer's perspective, time equals money. Back and forth and back and forth equals more money. We want to attract investment into our community, not create a situation where a developer is going back and forth and back and forth. I'm sure you would agree. In my opinion, the document is good, but it's not yet good to go. There are important descriptive sections that are missing from these guidelines. I think the challenge that we have is that you all have been in deep with this material for a little over a year now, well, almost a year, and sometimes it is a challenge to step back from that and put your developer's hat on to try and get a perspective from what they see when they read this material. As, as in, in the material that I sent to you, I provided you with a long list of sections that are missing. I'm not going to repeat that, as you said, it's already there for the record, but I would ask you to read those materials because for each of those sections, I provided a justification for why that information really needs to be included in. I do want to talk briefly about the public realm. More guidance is needed on the public realm. I recognize that that's not a private property owner's responsibility, but it is very important that the public realm be, the development in the public realm, or lack thereof, be coordinated with a private property owner so that when a property is developed, that it look like it was planned and it matches up with and coordinates with the design guidelines for the public realm. That includes things like landscaping and streetscape. There really isn't much in, in these guidelines about the public realm and what the plan is for landscaping and streetscape. There's a lot of information in here for what is in the responsibility of a private property owner, but it's nothing, not much in here with respect to public property. So, you know, you have that short space between the curb and the property line, and then you have the private property. What's going to go in that public realm area? What is the paving going to look like? Is it going to be, I'm just going to make this up for purpose of an example, is it going to be pink? And then with respect to the private property owner, it's going to be yellow? So is it, is it coordinated? I'm just using that as an extreme example of what, what we need to think about. Landscaping panels in the public realm, will there be any? Where, is there enough space to put street trees in there? We talked about native shade trees. Is there enough space for that? If not, will, are they going to survive? Are you going to put trees in places where they're not going to survive and then have to incur as a town more expense to have to replace them every, oh, I don't know, five to 10 years because they just can't survive, there's not enough soil volume there for them? With respect to climate change, we all experienced flooding in downtown Hyannis in early August, didn't we? So there's nothing in this material about climate change and how are we going to adapt our design guidelines to meet that? If I were a developer who happened to be here on August 8th this past summer when we had those torrential rains, my first question is going to be, wow, I don't really want to put a building nearby where the stormwater drains are because, wow, my property may flood. There's nothing in here that says, within the public realm and within public infrastructure, how we will be improving that in order to protect private properties from the possibility of additional events similar to that, that occurred in August. So many of the elements that I mentioned in my comments can serve to unify the design as you're looking down Main Street Hyannis. I think it's important to have a unified vision for the public realm and for private property, but allow private property owners enough space to be creative in their design to match their own business needs. I do feel that it's not well described in this document. An additional time, I'm not talking about years of time, I'm probably talking about a couple of months, might be needed in order to describe those public realm elements. These missing sections are critical to describe the vision for what we want to say, what we want to see, sorry. Further, I recommend that the urban design guidelines be prepared for each village. I mentioned this last time we met, but there are some people here that I noticed were not here. I do feel that it's important for us to get ahead of the development curve. What you don't want to have happen in the villages is that a developer approach the county, I was going to say the county, but it's in fact the town for approval of a site plan, and you don't have a unified vision for what needs to happen in that area. So we're preparing that here for Hyannis, that's going to be helpful. But what about the other villages? What is the flavor, if you will, that each of those villages wants to portray? You don't want to be behind the eight ball with respect to the development curve. You want to have those design guidelines for each village prepared so that a developer knows what it is that they need to propose with respect to the flavor of each of those villages. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, any other members of the public? Come on down. Welcome, sir. Excellent, thank you.
So I spoke previously about Ms. Eric Schwab. I'm from West Hyannis. Okay, I'm going to, I asked for 10 minutes to make this presentation. I was only given three and change, so I'm going to go through this pretty quickly.
Yeah, it sounds good. The, the previous public speaker, I gave six, so let's double it to six.
First of all, are you familiar with this document here? Have you seen that?
Yes, sir.
This is a 1998 Cape Cod Commission Design Guideline.
Um, you, you have to speak to the microphone, yeah. Roger, thank you.
That's a 1994 Design Guideline for Cape Cod, developed by the commission. It was the very first work product of the Cape Cod Commission. It was the first document they published. That document has more detail about the character of Cape Cod than the Unified Guidelines you're presenting and asking us to approve. So I have that document, I like it, I've read it several times. So I took that document and I created this document, which goes a little bit further. It looks at the 2005 DIP, which is currently one of your regulations, it's enforceable. I looked at the 2012 Historic Guidelines, and I looked at the 2023 Cape Cod Commission Guidelines for Multi-Family Housing that came out in October, just came out. In fact, staff referenced it on several occasions. Each of those documents has more detail than the work product you are considering today. So as Kathy said, you've made tremendous progress, but you're not there yet. You're close, but you're not there yet. Okay, so I'm going to fly through this 30-page presentation. Which one?
No, no, left and right.
Left and right. Okay, so just a suggestion, why don't you just unify these lines? I mean, do you really need to have these lines separating the giz from the Historic District? You know, just if this, if we're going to develop space, then just develop all the space and do it uniformly. This is an artificial boundary. Look at the guidelines, I mentioned that. This is the, is the current guidelines, which I believe have regulatory force for the Historic District, right? So these are not actually guidelines, they're called guidelines, but they're regulations. This is the DIP. You guys have terrible names. The most important thing about the DIP is that it specifically references character. Nowhere in the Unified Guidelines is the word "character" used. Nowhere is there guidance in the vernacular of the design that you would like to achieve in the downtown area. Without character, without reference to character, there is no Historic District. The very definition of a Historic District is the character. So it's, it's kind of a gap, you've got to fill it. Here are some diagrams, simple diagrams. What's interesting here is that nowhere in any of these documents is there a reference to four stories. We changed the zoning to four stories, but no one has updated the design for four stories. So you're asking developers to sort of fall into that gap and sink or swim, and you saw the trouble that some recent projects had, trying to fill that gap. Some highlights, the, the notion of vernacular architecture is very important. When you say you like Nantucket-style housing, that's vernacular, okay? Do you want Hyannis to look like Nantucket? Do you want it to look like Chatham? If you want those things, you have to specify them, you have to specify the vernacular. This is the Cape Cod Multi-Family Housing. It's very, very detailed, but again, nowhere is there four stories. Any mention of four stories. So that's a pretty big gap, you've got to fill that. Here are some suggested building shapes. They speak to Tom's concerns about separate foundations, and they suggest different sort of workarounds, but again, there are very few visuals in your Unified Guidelines that would help a designer understand what is your thinking and what is you want. So without those visual clues, architects have trouble meeting your expectations, and you get spin, you get a lot of different iterations, and that just costs everyone There's a lot of talk about facades in the existing guidelines. So the discussion you just had about 400 feet, 180 feet, you know, there's very, very specific guidelines in, currently that have regulatory force that require entrances every 50 feet. And I think personally, the, some of the designs we've seen in newer projects really miss that cadence, which is every 50 feet, there's an entrance, maybe an inset, and this is very, very well covered in the existing Historic Guidelines. The Historic Guidelines that we currently have in force has very, very good descriptions of doorways, very good descriptions of first floors, second floors. All of that detail is missing in the Unified Guidelines. There's no understanding of your expectations. What do you want it to look like? It's just not spelled out. I went round and round with this whole requirements, guidelines thing. You know, if these are requirements, column requirements, you know, if they're guidelines, then separate them, put them in a different chapter, all right? Don't sort of blend them in, and don't repeat topics like massing. In your current guidelines, you have a discussion of massing in requirements and another discussion of massing in guidelines. It's confusing. I mean, I frankly got, didn't want to bother Jim anymore, so I just let it go. But it's very difficult for someone to understand your expectations, and that's really what this is about. These guidelines are about your expectations, what do you want the architect to build for you? And that's just not clear. I'm going to go into this...
Yeah, coming up on seven minutes.
I'm almost done. Let's go right to why character matters, okay? You need to understand the, the character of a neighborhood. When you go up to the trees, right, you know what the character of that neighborhood is, and you could describe it. If you go to Centerville, Main Street, you can describe the character of that village center. You can't do that in Hyannis, and you haven't done it. There was some talk about living document previously. The current guidelines are not living, they're just not quite born yet, okay? You, you have to create a document with good foundation, and that's, you're about two, three months away from that. We could do it faster, we could do it in three weeks if you asked us to. You need to have an architectural view of these guidelines. No disrespect intended, but architects know stuff that we don't know, and we should ask them to look at and approve it. And if we don't, we're going to be in trouble with the builders, because we want builders to come, there are projects coming in at a fast and furious pace, and the guidelines aren't set, they're not ready. So we ask that you defer and create a working group. I'm sure Kathy would be a great recruit, and I think we can get you guys fixed up in two, three weeks' time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Come on down. State your name, sign in. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. How are you all?
Excellent, thank you.
Happy holidays to all of you.
Same to you.
My name is William Hedley Smith. I'm from Hyannis. It's my home. Hyannis and Barnstable, it's my, been my investment monetarily for 62 years and spiritually. When it's your home, you kind of view it differently than you do your neighbors or another town. And I really feel as though I understand completely why there might be a, an appeal on some of the decisions that have been made in these last months. I have been to several meetings, and not at any time did I feel like at all the questions I asked were answered. I even came tonight hoping to be very bipartisan as a citizen and, and a board, to realize that, you know, in asking questions, it was always referred to that a board, a planning board approved it, or the building commission approved it. I don't see any, any reason in the world why you wouldn't want to know that what they approved is completely wrong. It doesn't worth math, mathematically, it doesn't work. I learnt a long time ago that mathematics is the only language in the world that does not deceive, it can't deceive. It's a universal code of what's possible. Now, I must say, I came here tonight, and you can't talk about a lot of things, but because of the appeal, but I want you just to think of it this way. Just because a planning board or a, a building commissioner approves it, doesn't mean it's been factually researched to the point that the figures are valid. I have done my figuring, I have asked some of the professionals, and my philosophy on asking professional is like, if you need a heart operation, you're not going to go to the dentist, you're going to go to a professional who's ripped apart cities and towns and refurbished them and made them, made them work. We don't have any idea, from what I've heard, of what the vision's going to be. Is it for tourism? Is it for sleeping quarters? Is it for boat? There's nothing going on, the plan is not in place. Now, without, without going behind your back, which you said you don't want to talk about things you can't talk about, figures are wrong. Figures are wrong that have been presented to you by developers. Developers are here for one reason, not to improve my home, but to make money. That's why they develop. This community is historic in many, many ways that goes back hundreds of years and centuries that built this place. And in the future, people are going to want to come here because it's beautiful and quaint like the old days, where they can go to the oceans and the beaches and feel completely at home. I really don't know what to say, that when I ask questions at the other meetings, all I get is somebody say, "Your two minutes is up." I never got an answer. So there's got to be some credence, sir, as the commissioner, to be able to explain or to set up meetings so people can question the figures that obviously you don't see that are wrong, they're not right. And for you to accept it is really, really not the position you're in. Your position is to be a leader and to listen to people and use your own judgment to facts, not to what the developer wants you to think is going to happen. Hyannis, hand over.
Are, are you referring to the guidelines right now?
I'm sure you do.
To, to this document?
I'm referring to that document. There's no plans from professionals.
Okay, just checking.
Let me say it again. You don't go to a dentist for a heart operation, you go to somebody who knows what they're doing. There's no vision of what Hyannis is wanting to be in the future. Now, that's not your fault, I'm being very humble here, I'm not blaming anybody, but it's just not present. And the figures that I have got do not coincide with what's being told to you that's proper to do any type of construction in the village. So I'm going to leave it there, but I wish there was a place where we could sit down and talk about it, I could give you these figures, and when you see it, you go, "Oh, wow, I never thought of that." You know, the brightest people in my life that I've ever met, politicians and businessmen, they had one thing in common... they had one thing in common: they listened.
Thank you. And I'll just state that any documentation shared with town staff is shared with these boards. So please, if you have anything.
I completely disagree with you. I don't think that's fair at all.
Not a fact.
It's not a fact.
Anything you share with staff is shared with us.
The figures that I have got compared to the figures that are given to different developers in this town are not even close to being factual. And everything you're basing on saying yea and nay is with false figures. I'd be happy to explain it to you. But you've already stated you do not want to hear it tonight. So I'm going to leave you and say, "I wish there was a place where we could all get together and discuss these before a huge mistake is made." That's all. I wish you the best.
Thank you very much, sir. Any additional public comment? Please make your way to the podium. State your name for the record. Thank you, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Chris Keun. I live in Centerville.
Thank you, welcome, Chris.
I've been a resident of the town in excess of 50 years. And I've looked through the draft guidelines, and I see nothing really historic about what you're going to allow to take place. Huge buildings are not historic. This building we're in right now is a four-story building. It's 135 feet long. You could fit almost four of these along Main Street down at the TD Bank property. I can't imagine what that would look like. And this is a historic building. When I think of Hyannis or the town of Barnstable, I kind of think of it similar to the Cape Cod Mall. The mall has anchors. Without them, they fail. The town of Barnstable has an anchor in Hyannis. For hundreds of years, the residents of this town have protected the historic integrity of this village. Once it's gone, it will never, ever return. You can't put that genie back in the bottle. So I would caution you, be careful what you wish for, because you definitely will get it. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any additional public comment? Come on down. State your name for the record. Greetings, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. For the record, my name is Rob Brennan. I am a resident of Barnstable, voter in Barnstable, a property owner in Hyannis on Main Street, developer in Hyannis, and an attorney that represents developers in Barnstable and beyond. I'm speaking tonight purely in my capacity as a citizen. And I am, I want to respond to a couple of comments talking about figures. I have absolutely no idea what was being talked about there in terms of figures, misrepresentation of figures, not understanding of figures. But I do know a couple of things about figures. And that is that regulation carries a price with it. And every single regulation that's being considered, that's being drafted, that's promulgated, has an impact on the cost of development. Federally and statewide, we cannot and do not promulgate regulations without considering the cost and the benefit. The cost of the regulation and the financial benefit of the regulation. I know that's not part of the charter or the committee, you know, or the charge either board tonight. But I'd ask you to consider that because we are much closer to the Hyannis of 2053 than we are to the Hyannis of 1953. And I think too often, in comments that I hear on projects, projects that I've been involved with, projects that I've been observing, there is a gravitational pull toward a fixed period of time to freeze Hyannis, to preserve Hyannis at a fixed point of time that is entirely arbitrary as the history of Cape Cod, the history of Barnstable, history of Hyannis. And we've heard this tonight, stretches hundreds of years. So why the Hyannis of 1953 as a point that we are designing to and building to for a Hyannis of 2053? And on Cape Cod and in Barnstable, that is facing unprecedented challenges with regard to workforce housing. In 1953, 50% of the workforce of Hyannis was not traveling from over the bridge. That is the case today, and that is reflective of the challenges that we're facing with regard to the cost of development. Already, it's only folks that are buying their second and third homes that can afford new homes here in Hyannis, in Barnstable, and Capewide. That is a trend that is only going to continue spiraling downward if on top of building codes that we want to move toward net zero, we're imposing historic regulations that are fixing in a period of time. And particularly, we're talking about the elimination of, you know, fourth-story development that's allowed for in the Form-based code. That has a significant impact on the cost of creating housing when you're limiting it only to three stories. You're now not spreading that foundation over a fourth floor. You're not spreading the cost of roofs and all the structural supports over fourth floor. You're drastically increasing, by those requirements, the cost of developing housing. So this is, you know, a challenge. Just as standing at the crossroads of housing and climate, how do we solve for both? How do we also solve for preserving character and facilitating, you know, development, in particular, development of housing going forward? I heard the suggestion that we should bring architects into the mix. I work with a lot of architects. I love my architects. But I do know that one of the things that builders and developers know and could tell you, and I could tell you, is the cost of construction. So to the extent that I believe cost ought to be something that's considered when we're looking at regulatory changes, I would challenge that if we're going to develop a working group, if you're going to bring anyone else into the fold, there ought to be, you know, representation by the builders and developers who are today trying to meet that challenge of how do we develop housing in a region faced with climate change, trying to be true to its history? But that's got to be part of the conversation. I would be well, I'd be happy to join that conversation, but there are lots of folks here, including other folks here in the audience, that I think would bring that good perspective. So I'd ask you, you know, to consider that in all of what you're doing in the great, you know, draft Unified Guidelines that I've been through as well in adopting those, but in making any changes. And considering what is our anchor point for reference to take into consideration, again, the Hyannis of 2053 and the cost of getting there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Any additional public comment? Come on down. State your name for the record. No. I said no. Each person gets one chance to speak. If there's anybody else who would like to speak, please come on up. State your name for the record. I'm ignoring him. I'm ignoring you. If anybody else has comment, come on down. We will look for new comment. Seeing none, we will look for a motion to close the public hearing. We're going to have motions on both sides. Why don't we start with Planning Board? What's that, Bob?
She'll move.
Thank you, Bob. A second?
Michael, second.
Thank you, Michael. All those in favor? Matthew?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye.
Do I have a motion to close public comment from the HHDC? From Commissioner Crowley. Commissioner Doherty?
Aye.
Commissioner Crowley? Oh, wait, it was in the second, sorry. Second, oh, it's Commissioner Doherty. That's right, so Commissioner Doherty, go ahead.
Aye.
Commissioner Crowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
I also say aye.
Excellent, public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. So at this time, we'll go through the board and see if we have any final discussion, comments. I for one am ready to move this forward. And if anybody feels they're not ready to move this forward, let's hear it. Matthew, how are you feeling?
No comment, thank you.
Okay. Michael?
I'm good, thanks.
Tim?
The only comment I have might be a point of order or technicality, but I did notice in the, not in a regulation, but in the guidelines, there's reference to the telecommunications on the roof, you know, behind parapets and things like that. And I know that specifically telecommunications and, you know, radios and things required by or regulated by the FCC is usually a sticky thing with zoning, even though it's a guideline, not a regulation. So I just don't know if Jim feels maybe that should get a run-through legal.
Yeah, hi. So I completely understand where you're coming from with that. I think since it's a guideline, just if there's opportunities to screen, I think it's certainly something that I think this board and commission should strive for. That's my recommendation. But ultimately, you are correct. I know there's higher levels of regulations that would likely take precedent over this.
Generally, we feel that if that stays in the guideline, which it is, we should be fine.
That would be my recommendation at this time, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that was a.
Okay, great. Mary?
All set, thanks.
And Bob?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, only thing I was going to mention is, I think Tim brought this up at the last meeting. Also heard from a couple members of the public about getting together more frequently. I see no reason to get together once a year, just to look at what's happened during that year, look at the document. Another thing that, you know, is coming is the LCP. And the results of that, I think, should also influence the document. So what I plan to do before we make a motion on this, to make a separate motion for these boards to get together. Is that a okay way to do it?
Can I suggest that that be put in the document or somehow noted in our guidelines ordinances?
Yeah, does that belong as a motion in the document, both?
In other words, for it to be included in it?
I think putting it in the document under the introduction is a very wise motion. That way, you know, it's living in the document and you can refer back to it as opposed to, you know, going back to minutes from previous years.
Do you want to put yearly? Or how do you want to put that word?
Yeah, so I would just, um.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make it right now. Yeah, I'll make my motion, we'll vote, and then we can go that way. So I move to add to the introduction of the Downtown Hyannis Unified Design Regulations and Guidelines that the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission and the Planning Board convene once per year to discuss this living document. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. All those in favor? Matthew?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye.
I shall also make the motion for the HHDC that we try to meet, that we do meet with the Planning Board annually to discuss the documents, see if there's any amendments or anything else we want to discuss on it or anything that needs to be tweaked.
I second that.
Thank you. So Commissioner Doherty?
Aye.
Commissioner Carly?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
I also say aye.
Excellent, thank you.
Anything else on your end? I'm going to ask if anyone has anything on our side?
Yeah, see if your side has anything else.
Okay. That was one of the things I was actually going to suggest. And also, just a clarification from Jim, if I may, please. These are guidelines, and we all have our ordinances as well. In our ordinance, it also clarifies historic quite often. And it also clarifies character. And that doesn't change with guidelines. Just to clarify that.
That's correct. Your ordinance is untouched. You can certainly have those discussions about amending ordinances in the future, but that would have to go through Town Council.
And just to clarify for the public, we frequently say, when an application comes before us, does it, you know, is it the character? Is it the of the town? Is it the historic? Because that's what we are, the HHDC. Do any of the other commissioners have anything else they wanted to bring up with regard to the guidelines? Commissioner Matthews?
Just real quickly, I did think that was a great idea to make this, to assure it's a living document to meet on a yearly basis to make sure everything's tied up. The other thing I thought was a great idea for public comment was having regulations and guidelines for each village. I think that's a smart idea. Obviously, that doesn't really, that's nothing that we can do on the HHDC as we're focused on Main Street Hyannis, but I don't know how the process would go. But I think that's a good idea.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Doherty?
I just have one thing. You know, when I look at character, which hit me today. I don't know how much of these guidelines that we're really looking at the character. And, you know, we're looking at a 1953 Hyannis and a 2053 Hyannis. I don't know if this is the Hyannis that I want.
Okay.
Okay, going forward. I don't know, I'm a little confused right now. I think, are we pushing these guidelines? I know we have, it's better than nothing, I hear. But is that the way to pass something? Better than nothing? Maybe we do need a little more time to go through these guidelines and check the character, you know, of what we're trying to do here. You know, we've had a few meetings, but really it was the last month that we've really all got together as a group for the first time to look at this process. So I'm a little confused right now. I think we might be pushing this a little too quickly. And it might, in my opinion, needs a little more work, so.
How do the other commissioners feel about that? Any other comments?
I'm with Tom.
You're with Tom? Okay.
I think my own opinion is that rather than kind of tear everything up and have to build it back again, is there a way that we could accommodate because perhaps the document can reference part of the ordinance? That is our mission. Then incorporate that in here.
That's not a bad idea. Just like on page.
Because you don't want to be putting the same thing down twice because of being consistent.
Okay, I think I know where to put it, too. You bear with me just a second. I did mark it.
On page 12 and 13 is your ordinance.
And 15. Administrative review, Hyannis Main Street. 13 is, yes, 13 and 15.
I mean, maybe we could find some language that kind of gives force to the legalese, conveys something in an understandable, lay manner.
We could put part of the ordinance in there because that stresses the character.
Gotcha.
The last, I know the exact paragraph I'm thinking of in the ordinance that specifies, we could put that in there because that is, it's something that's already a living document that we have, that we're bound by. And it just clarifies that, you know, the character, the historic nature, da-da-da, and all that stuff. But I do know that every application we have that comes before us, we are trying to maintain, you know, the ordinance and work with people to try to tweak it and make it work. How do commissioners feel about that? Put part of the ordinance in. Jim, we can add something along that, can we not?
You certainly could add more of the ordinance if you so chose. If you're looking at things in terms of historic, you know, historic significance and design of diverse, unique buildings, et cetera, page five and six and seven and eight and nine is really where that develops out.
Do you have a copy? It's on, under purpose.
Under the.
It's actually identified as purpose. That's the part that I'm thinking of.
Are you referring to your ordinance again?
Yes.
Gotcha.
I think that would take care of it. The one, the purpose that I always put in the agenda and I frequently read out whenever it's a matter of, let's remind. it's a matter of, let's remind people what we're doing here.
Happy to add the purpose into, under, on page 12, under the general ordinance citations, adding purpose of the commission. We could do that just below here, since we refer to its jurisdiction.
Do you have a copy handy by any chance? Or Karen, do you have a copy handy? Just if we read it out and see if that solves a problem?
I do. The purpose, the purpose of the article is to promote the educational, cultural, economic, and general welfare of the inhabitants of Barnstable, the town's unique community character, and through the preservation, protection, the distinctive characteristics of the building structures and places significant in the history and architecture of Barnstable, and through the preservation, maintenance, and improvement of the, of appropriate settings of buildings, structures, and places, encouragement of new design which is compatible with the existing historical and community character, and through the benefits resulting in economy of said town by preserving and enhancing the amenities and historical aspects of various villages and areas. Desirable place to live in, for tourists to visit.
See, I think if we overwrite the ordinance, we run into a lot of problems. Because now we're stating the ordinance, but then putting it into our own kind of phraseology.
But that is the ordinance, we're not changing it.
That's what I'm saying. That's what, we don't need to interpretation the ordinance, but perhaps if the ordinance or significant aspects of it are put up front.
Okay.
Made more prominent in the document.
Add it in, you don't want the actual ordinance in there, 'cause it...
Well, the ordinance is always fine for people to read, but perhaps what could be singled out is what Jim just read.
Yes.
You're saying add the purpose section of the ordinance to the document?
Exactly.
To give that context. That's what I was stating, put that purpose section in.
I think that's a strong idea.
Yeah, I'm leery about restating what the ordinance is.
Right, too much.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, although the purpose certainly has value in adding that, yeah.
So we could do something like, to clarify the purpose of the Hyannis Main Street, da-da-da, is that? Because it's straightforward, it's already been documented.
I certainly can add that on page 12 if you wish.
And does that section in the ordinance have a heading that can be referenced?
Yes, you're referring from the ordinance?
Yeah, should a motion be made to amend?
Oh, I see.
You know what I mean?
Section 11224, purpose of the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District.
You said 112...
24.
Yep.
And then do we wanna put that before the 11229 that's already in there?
Right, I think that makes sense.
How do you feel about that?
Sounds great. To me.
Yeah, that way we've clarified, we've put in the character and we've stressed it. How, how...
Page 12. So on page 12, section 112-24, the ordinance would be added prior to section 11229. Makes sense to me.
Which is exactly what Jim just read.
Planning Board, any comments on that?
You all right with that?
Okay.
So, we're adding two things. One is the annual, which has already been a motion. Shall I make a motion that we add the 11224? Are you, everybody okay with me doing that?
Well, it's certainly up to you. I mean, obviously you have two commissioners that, you know, potentially aren't comfortable, but you potentially do have others that are comfortable. So it's up to your commission if you'd like to make a motion or not.
May I? So during this whole process, in all the public hearings and stuff, and please correct me if I'm wrong, any board member, commissioner, it seems to me a lot of the problems with these regulations and guidelines are things we, and I keep saying it all the time, we don't have purview over. I think a lot of this is zoning. Four floors, longer builds, that's all zoning. And it just feels to me that, I understand everybody's thought process, and it's, you know, it's, we all have different opinions, and we all work together to try to get to the best place we can, but there's some things that we can't, or it's not in our purview to change or to fix. That's another place that has to be done. That's my opinion, and I could be wrong, but everything I hear, from parking to sewer to four floors, there's nothing, we can only go by the regulations that happened when these actual projects came in. And I think that's the frustration, at least on my level, and probably on yours as well, is you're looking for us to make a decision that we really can't make, because it's not, we don't have that kind of power or authority. So I think that's just, that's one of the things that has bothered me about this whole process. So, again, I think all of your ideas and your thoughts are well-founded, and you have your reasons for thinking them, and I totally understand. But I just don't think it's anything I can consider when these kind of projects come through, just because it's not, when I'm being told I can do. So that's just my feeling about the whole thing. As to adding the purpose, that's, that's fine, I can go one way or the other, it doesn't really, I have no concern there, one way or the other.
To add on to what...
The frustration is the zoning, you know, here, but we can do, like, the length of the building, can't we adjust that? That's not in zoning. If we have a building that's 400 feet or 200 feet, we can adjust that to put, separate it to another building, so it doesn't look like a row of buildings. We can do that, we can change that in these guidelines, you know? Or, or can we, in certain areas, does it have to always be four floors? You know, is that going against zoning? Can we have some sections of Hyannis that are three stories and others four stories? Is that in our jurisdiction? I don't know.
Not, yeah, not if it contradicts the zoning, then you get into a dangerous...
But we can do the length of the building.
Yes, yeah. And certainly, we can discuss that here and now. If that's something that we all feel should be tackled, let's tackle it.
What we could do, a couple things here. One is up to, change a little bit of the wording, and use our, what do we call, you call you, Jim, Word Wizard, to fix those things? The, the, to up to 100 feet, you know, change us up to, up to. But we have to remember that, Commissioner Matthews, you have a very strong point there. There's a lot of things that are not in the HHDC purview, and I think what the public needs to understand, that what you have before you here tonight is the Planning Board who have their own guidelines and ordinances, and the Hyannis Main Street and Historic District Commission, who we have our own guidelines and our own ordinances. And what we're trying to do is to get all on the same page, so we're not contradicting. But there's also zoning, but what we're trying to do is to protect. Oftentimes, I feel like the HHDC is the gatekeepers for the historic. And, you know, certain things are going to happen, but what we're trying to do is protect it. I agree very much, I constantly harp on character when I have applications before us, and a lot of people who have come before us know that I do that. Is this the character? How can we fix it? How can we make this work? Work with us. And we get there, we have a little bit of compromise, a little bit of a tug and pull, but I do like the idea of putting this, the purpose in, because that strengthens the gatekeeping purpose to protect the historical and to protect the character. And we have often done that, but we've also, have to be realistic in certain things on, you know, the town has to also grow. So how can we help it to grow and still maintain the historic and the character? So what we're doing, what has been proposed, is to put the, the purpose in, which strengthens what we let through that gate. Does that make sense? It puts more of a task before us, but I think we're up for it, we've worked very well on it. And most things do get approved, it's a matter that we have to work on them. But anyway, that's, that's my feeling.
Yeah, thank you. No, well said, definitely, we're trying to find a balance here. And again, our charge is to attempt to unify our guidelines and your regulations, to find a unified document.
And also, further on that, what we've had in the past is, well, if we can't get it through the HHDC, we'll go to planning, or we'll go to somebody else. We're trying to strengthen that bond, so that we're working together, and we're, that's why we have pages 12 and 13 and 15 and that, so that, that does not allow that to happen quite so readily, and to protect the town and the character and the historical. There is a motion on the table. I'd rather, you know, I personally don't wanna go backwards, I think we've worked hard to make some changes, but I am, as I've frequently said in our meetings, I'm one voice, I'm one vote. So there is a motion on the table for us to include the pur, did we put that in yet or not?
No, there's no motion on the table yet.
Okay, I, so I'm gonna make, we'll get through that part first. I'd like to make a motion that we at least add the purpose into this document.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Doherty?
Aye.
Commissioner Carly?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
I also say aye. So we are going to add the purpose into the section 112-24.
I'm gonna make the same motion to amend the document to include section 112-24 of the ordinance to page 12 before section 112-29 is referenced in the document. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Tim, all those in favor? Matthew?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Okay, so we've made those two changes.
And also, just to point out, we have already put in that we're going to be meeting annually. If something isn't working, it will be our job to make those amendments.
Thank you. Yeah, and I don't want to disregard what Tom has said, you know, I think he brought up an important point about the potential maximum length of a foundation. Planning, do we have any comments on, on that? We do have two gentlemen in the construction industry that might be able to speak to this. Matthew, any comments about potentially having a maximum foundation length?
I think the, the way the guideline is written now, I think it provides sufficient guidance in terms of building facade setbacks and otherwise, and I think Jim touched on the point, there are very few opportunities we're gonna have, in the, specifically in the downtown area, where you're gonna have the, even an opportunity to build a building over 400 square, 400 linear feet. And based on what we're currently looking at today, that's gonna have a number of different modules, roof lines, you know, opposing gables, those sorts of things. I don't think it's germane or particularly important, given, given the district we're working in, right? This is not, we don't have vast swaths of 10-acre vacant parcels here to work with.
Yeah, that was my thought as well. Michael?
No comment, thank you.
All right. Tim, anything to add?
No, I'd agree with my fellow board member, Matt, in that, you know, there are maybe only a handful of unique circumstances where that overall building length and, you know, separate foundations can come into play, but the goal and the purview of this document, I think, is intent mostly on aesthetics, you know, not zoning regulation, because that would be a separate matter. So it really becomes the overall character of the design of that building, and the aesthetics of its individual facade, and its massing, and its roof shape. So, and I think that is clarified enough, and leaves enough in the guidelines to set the tone for the Historic Commission to be able to review the projects individually, to see what works on an individual project, individual site. So I think the document kind of covers enough area for the board to handle that well. Thank you.
Great, well said, thank you. Tim, Mary, anything to add there?
All set, thanks.
All right, Bob, anything to add?
I agree with Matt and Tim, but I'd also like to point out that when you look at the regulatory framework in its entirety, the zoning ordinances, the responsibilities of the various boards, if someone were to come in, and just using this figure of 400, that I understand Mr. Doherty wasn't locked into 400 per se, but using it as an example, if a proposal came in out of length that the historical folks thought was inappropriate within the scope of the guidelines and regulations of the board, they simply could say, no, we're not gonna approve that, for the reasons set forth in their own enabling ordinance in the guidelines, in the regulations.
That's a good point. Okay, thank you, Bob. Well, I, I'm gonna start with a point of order for Jim. Jim, should a motion be made, now that we have made two prior motions with changes, would we be stating it as proposed or as amended?
As amended.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get there before we go to vote?
Go ahead.
So I'm gonna ask the commissioners, I have my own view, but I'd like to hear your views first on, on the 100 feet. Actually, I'll go ahead and state mine first, which I rarely do, so you know where my mind is. The 100 feet and things like other feet, you know, not so much the seven-foot setback, but the, I think there's some wiggle room, if you say up to 100 feet, or up to this on the large ones, that, as Commissioner Twiss was saying, the, things can be denied, but it can also, it also makes more power for negotiation. You know, that doesn't fit in that spot at 100 feet, I'm using, just plucking that out, can't even remember what it was a reference to without looking at the paper, but if it's up to 100 feet, then it allows us to say it doesn't really fit in that spot, can you work with this and come back 20 feet on that, 'cause it's too long? Just adding the up to, but that's my personal opinion on those certain areas, but how do the other commissioners feel about it?
Well, me personally, the 400 feet, to me, is, I'm fine, I think that's something Bob just said that I thought was pretty good, and that kind of, kind of solidified for me. We could say no. We could say, no, you know what, we don't like it, and then it'll go through the appeals process, and we'll go from there. But I don't think it needs to be codified in a regulation or a guideline, a certain number of feet. That's my opinion.
I personally think we have too many, too many guidelines and not enough regulations in here. You're right, if something's 1,000 feet and it's too big, we can cut it back, but why not have a regulation? I'd rather have them come, if this is 300 or 400 feet, this is what we think is gonna look good on Main Street, I'd rather have them ask for an extension, all right, I need to go another 100 feet. That's the way I'm looking at it. Okay.
Which is similar type, just different wording. Commissioner Carly, how do you feel?
No comment.
Okay, Commissioner Clark?
No comment.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm gonna go ahead and get a motion on the table over this side, and then we'll see what happens from there. So do we have a motion?
What should he wants to make?
Whatever motion you want.
We've got two amendments.
Yeah, so we're all set with the amendments. Those motions have been made and are all set. So we would just need a motion, either as, well, it would be as amended because of those two, yeah.
This is for the whole document?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Thank you. The motion to adopt the Unified Downtown Hyannis Design Regulations and Guidelines by repealing section seven of the 2005 Downtown Hyannis Design and Infrastructure Plan and replacing it with the Unified Downtown Hyannis Design Regulation Guidelines as amended.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bob. All those in favor? Matthew?
Nay.
Michael?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Motion passes.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we rescind the previous, and with the motions as rendered before and accepted, to accept the proposed Downtown Hyannis Unified Design Regulations and Guidelines to be presented to the Town Council. Does it not have to be presented to the Town Council?
Tom, you're gonna wanna read it verbatim, yeah.
So...
So, okay, motion to adopt.
I'm sorry. So may I offer a motion for you if you wanted to move towards the adoption?
I can use what's written here. Motion to adopt the Unified Hyannis Design Regulations and Guidelines by repealing section 7 of the 2005 Downtown Hyannis...
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, Madam Chair, if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so the planning board, again, so we're working towards unifying, but we're not quite there yet. So they have the Design and Infrastructure Plan, that section of the design features. You have your design guidelines. So if I may offer a suggestion motion if you are looking to adoption. It's if the commission, motion to adopt the Downtown Hyannis Unified Design Regulations and Guidelines as amended and replace the existing guidelines.
Okay, so move. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Commissioner Dougherty? Commissioner Carley?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Nay.
I say aye.
Okay, thank you.
So I suppose the proposal is where to go from here?
Yeah, at this point, we're both going to adjourn.
So, real quick question on the floor here. So, planning board has formally adopted the quorum and a majority, it's four, for the Hyannis Historic? I heard three.
And it's three to two.
So I think this hearing would need to come back at a later date.
Yeah, it's three to two. Okay, so we come back at a later date, all right?
Okay.
Both boards.
And then...
They have, at this time, the planning board has adopted unified design guidelines that are not unified. But that's okay. We'll work through that, right?
All right.
Thank you.
Jim, just as a point of order, that needs to be a dueling hearing, or is that an individual hearing of the Hyannis Main Street?
I can work with the planning board and Hyannis Historic to provide next steps. As of right now, there's been an adoption of updated design guidelines by the planning board. There has not been, doesn't have to be, you have existing design guidelines in place. So we can, I can work with both boards on moving it forward in whichever manner they so choose.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Yeah, so at this time, both boards are going to adjourn, and then the planning board is going to reconvene for our regular standing meeting. All right, so at this time, we would seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, Matthew. And a second?
Second.
Mary, thank you. All those in favor? Matthew?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye.
On behalf of the HHGC, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dougherty?
Aye.
Commissioner Carley?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
I also say aye. We are adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to announce a five-minute...
We're gonna do a five-minute recess. Okay, good evening and welcome to the December 11, 2023, meeting of the Town and Barnstable Planning Board. My name is Steve Robichaud. Jim, just real quick, should I go through the Page 1 stuff again?
Uh, yeah, we might as well just...
Yep, no problem. Good evening and welcome to the December 11, 2023, meeting of the Barnstable Planning Board here at Barnstable Town Hall, 367 Main Street, Hyannis, Mass. In the James H. Crocker Jr. Hearing Room. We're on the second floor, and it is much later than 7:00 p.m. We're beginning tonight's meeting. We've already done that. The meeting notice has been previously filed with town clerk in accordance with Mass. general law. All materials may be accessed through the Planning Board website or by contacting Karen Pina at karen.pina@town.barnstable MA.us or calling 508-862-4064. Call this meeting to order, and we'll introduce our board members, starting with Matthew.
Matt Tig, good evening.
All right, Michael?
Good evening, Michael Messinas.
Mary?
Good evening, Mary Barry.
Bob?
Evening, Bob Twist.
Tim?
Good evening, Tim O'Neil.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, and staff, Karen.
Good evening, Karen Pina, Planning and Development.
And Jim?
Good evening, Jim Cutler, Assistant Director, Planning and Development.
Thank you both. Notice of recording this meeting will be televised live via Xfinity Channel 8 or High Definition Channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel livestream on the Town of Barnstable's website, streaming85.townofbarnstable.us/cablecastpublicsite. All right, and at this point of the meeting, we are going to go to general public comment. If we have any public comment not related to a agenda item this evening, seeing none, we will move on to our first agenda item, which is an A&R. Bob, would you mind reading this one?
I can do it, Mr. Chair, but I was gonna volunteer myself to do number three.
You know what? I'm gonna do this one.
I'll do it.
Oh, Mary, thank you.
This is approval-not-required plans for Randall C. Green and Wendy L. Jokum. Trustees of the Allen &amp; Sherry Green Revocable Trust have submitted an approval-not-required plan entitled "Plan of Land in Barnstable, Mass." C.O.M.M. Fire District, that's Kattuah, Osterville, Martinsville's Fire District, prepared for Randall C. Green. 101 Center Lane Map, 251 Parcel 220, and Randall C. Green and Wendy L. Jokum, trustees of the Allen &amp; Sherry Green Revocable Trust, 2012, 19, Center Lane Map, 250 Parcel 16, prepared by Bracken Engineering, Inc., dated November 9, 2023.
Excellent, thank you, Mary. And two quick things before we hear from the applicant. First, this is not a public hearing. It does not need to be voted to open close. And second, should a motion be made on this item, we would read the findings located on Page 2 of the staff report. We have the applicant with us here this evening. Sir, welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Jeffrey Johnson on behalf of the Green and Lee families, who own these two abutting properties. It's a fairly straightforward redivision of property lines. We've been to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I believe that you should have a copy of those two decisions allowing this. There's a notation on the plan referring to each ZBA decision. The redrawing of the lines created two lots that are exactly the same size as the predecessor lots. This plan accomplished keeping a driveway and a garage that has been used via an easement for the benefit of 99 Center Lane, the house closer to the lake. And now that garage and that driveway will be part and parcel of the property known as 99 Center Lane. 101 Center Lane is giving up the fee ownership in that section of the lot and is gaining a small bit of frontage on the lake on the other side of 99 Center Lane. I'm certainly here to answer any questions, but I'm trying to be significantly lower than a five-minute limit.
You can have as much time as you need, sir. You are the applicant. We will now go to the board for any questions, comments, concerns. Matthew, anything?
Uh, no.
All right, Michael?
No question, thank you.
Mary?
All set, thank you.
Bob?
I'm good, thanks.
Tim?
All set, thank you.
I'm all set as well. We'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion. To endorse the entitled "Plan of Land in Barnstable, Mass." prepared by Randall C. Green and Wendy L. Jokum, trustees of the Allen &amp; Sherry Green Revocable Trust, prepared by Bracken Engineering, Inc., dated November 9, 2023, as an approval-not-required plan.
And then just read those two findings, Page 2.
Okay, so in the, oh, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, yep, perfect.
All right, so in addition, the two findings that were associated with this A&R is it does not, it does not constitute a subdivision, because each of the lots have the minimum required frontage on an existing way, having suitable grades and adequate construction to provide the needs of vehicle traffic in relation to the proposed use of the installation of municipal services to service such use. And, number two, all materials and conditions of Chapter 801, Article 4, approved but not required plans have been submitted and are in full compliance.
Excellent, thank you, Mary. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We'll give it to Tim. All those in favor? Matthew?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Matter is approved.
Thank you. Do you know when I could pick up the Mylar?
You can pick it up this evening. Yep, I'll sign it in a moment.
Thank you.
Just give me a moment. So the next item is a special permit. Bob, I'm gonna have you read this, and then after Bob reads the item, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
This is item number three on the agenda, Special Permit Applications, 2023-005. Louis N. Vinos, trustee, J.P. Hyannis Trust, has submitted a special permit application for 378, 380, 382, and 384 Barnstable Road, and 425 Iano Road, Hyannis, Mass. Proposed construction of two new buildings for retail and food and beverage use. It, in a moment, I'll make a motion for an open hearing with Mr. Chair Anderson. You have a motion or declaration before I do that.
Yes, sir, thank you. Again, myself, Steve Robichaud, I will be recusing myself due to a conflict of interest, and I will be leaving the meeting early. Thank you.
Was it something I said?
Not at all. Very sad to leave, but, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This does require a public meeting, so I move to open the public meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Matt seconds. All in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Nobody else? And I vote aye as well. So the hearing is opened. Jim, do you have a presentation you wanna make before Mr. Kenny?
No, just, you have before you in your package a staff report discussing the background and the given approvals that have been accomplished to date. It has gone through formal site plan review. This is part of the new Downtown Hyannis zoning district, though it doesn't have the same restrictions as, say, Downtown Hyannis. This was your first one before you in the highway commercial zoning district. And obviously, per usual, if you guys deem this acceptable, there are findings and conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the planning board, for the record, my name is John Kenny. I'm an attorney at the Law Office in Centerville, and come before you tonight representing Louis N. Vinos, trustee of the J&amp;P Hyannis Trust. Here with me this evening is Attorney Pat Nickerson from my office, Matt Eddy from Baxton I Engineering, the project engineer. And sitting back here is Jack Gillis, the property owner representative, and Roy Katignani from Concert Group, the proposed builder of the property. As was at the end of the record, we're looking for a special permit under 240, 24.1.5B, under the use provisions in Table 1, to allow for retail use and restaurant use in the highway commercial district. Gets a little confusing, because there are four addresses for this property. They're four buildings on one parcel of land. So just wanted to clarify that. We actually started this project back in 2021. We were in front of site plan review. At that time, we got approval to tear down two of the buildings, which, Mr. Twist, I understand that you're an old-time Barnstable guy. You probably remember Airport Liquors, and behind it was a little building of, I think it was a travel agency at one point. We got approval to tear those down, re-landscape, and to build a building as of right. At that time, we did not have a proposed tenant for that building. Those two buildings did get taken down. The curb cut onto Barnstable Road serviced, Airport Liquors was closed and landscaped in, kind of completing the landscaping that my client has done all along the edges of this plaza, kind of beautifying it and upgrading it with all the changes that have gone on in that area. Also proposed as part of that original project were cosmetic changes to, I know it's been multiple places, but I always consider it the old Windjammer. I still call this place the King's Plaza. The old Windjammer, I forget what else it was called. I think it was McGrass and its last operator. And then the parcel next door is a G and Pizza, and there were cosmetic changes... there were cosmetic changes proposed to those. Then the client switched gears and decided to take down those two buildings as well and build a building that matches the Staples Plaza design. And so that's kind of where we are at now. And the idea here is really the only complicating matter, the four buildings were on a separate parcel. We are using the parking on 425 Barnstable Road, and that's why that's also part of this. So the idea here is, and what we committed to at site plan review, is the lot line between the lot that contains these four buildings and the lot line for the Staples Plaza will be eliminated. We are going to do it one of two ways. At the time, in front of site plan review, we talked about deregistering the parcel there because we thought one was registered and one was unregistered. Turns out, the vast majority of this plaza, only the backside of the staple building, a small strip, is unregistered. So we're still contemplating whether or not we're going to do an 81X plan, which would be a perimeter plan, combining the landcourt parcels all into one, or if we'll deregister all of the landcourt parcels and then do the 81X plan, making them all unregistered. So it's, bottom line, I think, from your perspective, we did not ask for relief from that interior lot line because it is to be eliminated, and that was one of the conditions of the site plan review, and it's one of the conditions in the staff report. So the only relief we're looking for is for the use in the highway commercial district, as I stated, retail use and restaurant use. Currently, it's our expectation that a GM Pizza will go out, that the new building will be built, and they'll move into a new facility with fewer seats and a little less square feet. Overall, there was a little over 11,000, 11,059 square feet of space on this parcel with four buildings, and we're proposing two 4,533-square-foot buildings with 9,066 square feet. So it's almost a 2,000-square-foot reduction in the total square footage on the project. And at this point, I'll ask Matt Eddy to kind of walk you through the site plan, and then I'll address the special permit conditions.
Good evening. For the record, Matthew Eddy, professional engineer with Baxton I Engineering and Surveying. If I could, I will use my pointer, kind of just point at the screen. Hopefully you can all see that. And just in relation to what Mr. Kenny was just talking about, just so that you can see where it is, and hopefully you can see it on the package in front of you, but the interior property line falls right along here. So these two existing buildings, and then you can see on the plan, there were two prior buildings here that were previously removed, as John mentioned. Those are the addresses of the parcels, and all of the parking falls on the 425 address for all of where the Staples Plaza is.
Sorry, just for
Yep.
Just for clarification, it's a G and Pizza, the old Windjammer, and then is it the food surplus building as well?
No.
No, that's over here.
There was a little building next door to the Windjammer, which housed, I think, a tourism
Now it's just gravel that's there?
Yes, exactly. And next to that was the old Airport Liquors, which fronted on, yeah. And so those two buildings are gone.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
So that's, again, that interior property line that John was referring to. So again, it was four buildings, two remaining. We're proposing to demolish the remaining two. From an analysis standpoint, as going through the site plan review, because of the large parcel for Staples, we're looking at this area here, which you can see I've defined a line on this plan. We'll kind of call on that the project area of about 49,000 square feet. We have significant frontage, over 200 feet of frontage along Barnstable Road, and I know you all are familiar with the site, I'm sure, and it's all bound by, you know, existing commercial and retail uses. Existing zoning is highway commercial. We are in the WP and GP overlay district. That's the line dividing the GP and the WP, wellhead protection, groundwater protection overlays. The existing footprints for all four buildings, and I'm still looking at this as, you know, the two buildings that were removed, still kind of talking about it as the overall project, because that was really a significant benefit for, you know, the client and the town as far as really getting rid of those buildings. There were encroaching over the property lines. There was that very large, if you remember, curb cut, where all of those spaces there backed right directly onto Barnstable Road. So the applicant and owner agreed to, hey, let's get rid of that right now, do it in kind of these phases, and that's what John explained, that it has occurred. But the original four footprints, again, were around 9,057 square feet. When I talk about the proposed, I'll show you that the proposed footprints are generally the same. I think it was within about nine square feet of existing to proposed. The existing buildings, again, had, you know, non-conforming setbacks. Obviously, you know, some of the structures are actually encroaching over the property line. One of the buildings that was taken down previously was over the property line as well. So again, we're going to be cleaning all that up, which you'll see on the proposed plan. The site is obviously entirely cleared and developed with building, parking lot, et cetera. The access to the site, as I talked about, that's been closed already, that large curb cut. So the main access into the site that'll be utilized, so this is that existing entrance off of Barnstable Road that gets you into the Staples Plaza. So that'll be maintained as it is. Utilities in the site, it's obviously connected to public water and public sewer. There was actually new sewer, new sewer brought into the site about two years ago or so, replacement. So it's all brand-new sewer and cleaned up a lot of the issues that were going on with the existing sewer system there, sewer lines. So to the proposed... There we go. Looking for it to pop up. So the footprint here, that's where the two existing buildings that still remain sit, and this is the area that was already cleared of the prior two buildings. So two buildings being proposed, as John had stated, we have about 4,533 square feet retail building. And then here, building number two is 2,127 retail, and then the balance of it, 2406 square feet, a 20-seat restaurant. That's going to be the G and Pizza will land in there. From an impervious coverage standpoint, we've actually reduced the overall impervious coverage from the existing by about 15,000 square feet, so a significant reduction in the impervious coverage. There's only one sort of the GP and WP overlays, there's a 50% maximum impervious coverage. This site is obviously pre-existing legal, non-conforming to that, but we've made it more conforming now by a reduction of the impervious area from the existing. There's obviously no natural state, again, remaining on the site. Again, I think I've already kind of talked about the access aspect. The existing entrance into the site was reviewed through site plan review with the Hyannis Fire Department showing them turning templates for their access with their tower truck getting into the site, and they found that all to be approvable. From a parking standpoint, we've calculated 36 parking spaces required, and we're providing 39. Landscaping has been enhanced. We've provided, sorry, I keep losing my pointer here. We've provided landscape islands, which with parking lot trees, there's been street trees added, and a significant amount of landscape area here, and then obviously landscaping along in front of the two proposed buildings. And there has been a landscape plan that was submitted by Hark Design, a registered landscape architect, that went through site plan review and was approved through that process. So that should also be in your package as well. Parking setbacks, again, the existing had several pre-existing, non-conforming setbacks for the parking. Those have all been approved, or I'm sorry, improved by, again, removal of the parking that was back in this area here. We have the existing parking right along here, along Barnstable Road. This is all existing. That's not being modified, but we are removing some of the spaces here. So again, that's turning into landscape space there. And that setback there, 10 feet is the zoning ordinance. It's like 9.2 feet, I think, existing, so it's slightly non-conforming. But again, it's pre-existing, but very close to the 10 required. I think I hit on most of that. Enclosed dumpster area over here for the uses for the buildings. Drainage and stormwater management are being, we augmented for the buildings directly into underground stormwater management. Beyond that, there's an existing, significant existing stormwater management system in the parking lot here that did not need to be modified. And as I mentioned, you know, there'll be new public water services into the building, the new sewer that was installed, again, just extending services in. Overhead services, electric, et cetera, are going to be going underground. So again, another nice aesthetic improvement. And that is wrapped up my presentation on that. Again, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kenny, additional?
Thank you. I'll address the special permit criteria now. Section, under Section 240, 125(c)(2) of the zoning ordinance, the planning board, being the permit granting authority in the growth incentive zone, and we are in the growth incentive zone, is authorized to grant a special permit, provided that you find that the application for the special permit falls within a category of the zoning ordinance, which specifically authorizes the planning board to grant a special permit. And further, you must find that the proposed project, based upon the evidence presented, does not derogate from the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance, and that it is not substantially more detrimental to the public good or the neighborhood affected. 240, 24.1.5B, and the use table underneath that, give the uses for the highway commercial district, and they specifically authorize you to grant a special permit. It requires a special permit for the two uses that we're proposing, retail and food and beverage services, as it's described. We are in the groundwater protection and wellhead protection overlay district. Those sections have uses, basically what those sections say is, the use is allowed unless it's specifically accepted, in 240, 35F, I think it is, and these uses are not specifically accepted or prohibited under the groundwater protection. So we are entitled to come to before you to request the special permit. And I would suggest to you that the proposed redevelopment and proposed reuse would not be substantially more detrimental to the public good or the neighborhood affected. And it would not substantially adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, comfort, or convenience of the community. Looking at the overall project, as Matt just described, and I've described earlier, we've closed a significant wide-open curb cut onto Barnstable Road, and it was a liquor store to boot. Barnstable Road's changed a lot over the last few years. These were tired, old buildings that really needed to come down. There's been a lot of redevelopment in this area, some really nice-looking new buildings, and this kind of just goes along with it and fits right in. The four buildings, as I stated earlier, totaled 11,059. Two have been demolished, two are existing and have been historically used for retail and restaurant use. The proposed buildings totaling 9,066 square feet are just a continuation of those uses, but also feature improved aesthetics, setbacks, parking, access, and landscaping. The new buildings would meet the current building code requirements, and there's, as I stated earlier, a reduction in square footage of 1,993 square feet. The proposed development would not further derogate from the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. At site plan review, it was presented as a gallery frontage type under the new zoning, and I can't say that site plan review approves frontage because it's about site plan or building types, but there were no requirements from planning for any relief from the proposed buildings. It was deemed to meet the gallery frontage type. So elimination of three empty buildings, one dated building, and replacing the buildings that meet current design and current design standards for the new zoning district, I think, are substantial improvement and not substantially more detrimental to the public good. I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Let's go to questions to the board. Matt?
I have none.
Michael? No question, thank you. Mary?
I just have a question because we've seen, at least in my tenure, we've seen the CVA, the Citizens Bank and CVS going on that other corner across from the property. And then we saw the Starbucks and the Walgreens go on the other side of that property. And it's always traffic, right? The whole area's traffic is an issue. When you're accessing this property, the primary access will be coming down Barnstable Road, heading towards downtown Hyannis, taking a left into the Staples, right? Is that the, is that the access?
Check.
Is that how you're going to get to it?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
The main entrance into Staples?
Yeah, but I mean, you do have, you know, you can come down Barnstable Road either direction, turning into the site.
Right.
And there's also the entrance on 28 that gets you into the Staples Plaza and then connects you the
Yeah, from Ayana Road and coming around.
Yeah, right, on the opposite end of the Staples Plaza. So you can go through, you can enter there and go through the parking lot and
Okay, all right. But the only way on Barnstable Road will be going through Staples, through the Staples entrance.
Correct.
There's not going to be another entrance
That's correct.
Around, okay.
That's one of the benefits of this. We close that curb cut all the way down.
Yep.
I'm good with it basically replacing what was there. It's just kind of consolidating it and making it nicer. Yeah. And I do remember Airport Liquors.
How about Kings?
No, but I do remember the Windjammer. So I'm good, thanks.
Tim?
I'm all set. It's pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Great, thanks. I don't have any questions. However, I'm much too young to remember any of those places. I don't think there's any members of the public here, but to the folks who are here, are there any questions from the public that want to be heard? No, okay. There being no questions from the public, I assume, Mr. Kenny, you have nothing further to respond to comments. So then let's go to board deliberation. Matt?
I have no further comment. I'm in support of the project.
Thank you. Michael?
I agree. I'm also in support of this.
Same.
Same?
Also in support.
Okay. And I also have nothing to add. I'm in support. So I'll make at this time a motion to close the hearing, public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mary's second. So on the motion to close the public hearing, Matt?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that the public hearing is closed. I'll make a motion to approve with conditions, special permit 2023-05 for 378, 380, 382, and 384 Barnstable Road, and 425 Ayano Road, Hyannis, Mass, subject to the following proposed findings. Number one, the property location is 378, 380, 382, and 384 Barnstable Road, and 425 Ayano Road, Hyannis, Mass. Hyannis is shown on Assessors Map 311, Parcel 026, and Map 328, Parcel 070, in the Highway Commercial Zoning District, Wellhead Protection Overlay District, and Groundwater Protection Overlay District. Number two, the applicant and owner, Louis N. Vinios, trustee, JP Hyannis Trust, seeks a special permit pursuant to Section 240-24.1.5B, as in Bravo, use provisions, and Table 1 of the Barnstable Zoning Code, which allows retail use and food and beverage services by special permit. Three, the planning board finds that the issuance of the special permit is consistent with the design and infrastructure plan, and that development meets the following criteria. A, provides driveway interconnections between adjacent properties where feasible to avoid short trips and conflicts on the main road. B, provides shared driveways where feasible. C, reduce impervious surface and improve perimeter landscaping and stormwater management. Four, the application falls within a category specifically exempted, accepted, rather, in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit. Section 240-24.1.5B, as in Bravo, use provisions, and Table 1 allows the planning board to grant the use by special permit. Five, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance, and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Six, the site plan has been reviewed and approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. The conditions of The conditions of informal and formal site plan review shall be incorporated by reference as conditions of the special permit. Mr. Kenny, there are seven draft conditions on pages two and three of the draft staff report dated December 7, 2023. I take it you've had a chance to review those draft conditions. Do you have any objections?
The only one I object to is number five, the proposed redevelopment shall represent full buildout of the lots. Further expansion of the structures is prohibited without prior approval from the board. The only reason I object to that, we're removing the internal lot line. This is going to become a part of a very large plaza, and to suggest that this is total buildout for the site, I just think is a little bit of overreach for what we're doing here. If we can do it as of right, we should be able to do it as of right, and if not, we have to come back to the board.
Right. But what we're saying is that you can't do anything without coming back. You're going to have to come back anyway because whatever goes in there is going to require a special permit, won't it?
Not necessarily. If we have a use, it's allowed without special permit.
Is there any use that would be allowed without a special permit in that area?
I'm sure there is. I'd have to look at the zoning, but I'm positive there are. In fact, I believe that's required.
Yeah, there are uses that are allowed by right in that zoning district.
And I think the confusion here is, we're talking about that little sliver of land, and I would understand that this would be total buildout, but one of the conditions is that we combine that sliver with the entire parcel. So...
So let me suggest this, then. That's number five?
Yes.
Sentence two, the sentence, "Further expansion of the structures is prohibited without prior approval of the board." How about, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, getting rid of the period, putting in a comma, except as allowed as a matter of right by ordinance?
Well, we still have to deal with the first sentence, "The proposed redevelopment shall represent full buildout of the lots," plural. I just, I don't think it's needed.
How about if I get rid of that period after the first sentence, put in "and," and then put in the language I suggested, which means if it's allowed by right, you can do without coming back. If it's not allowed by right, you have to come back. And if it's not allowed by right, you have to come back anyway.
Why have that condition? Because isn't that the case?
That's where we started this conversation.
Yeah. The other problem is the second sentence refers to structures, and I think what Mr. Kenny's saying is, the lots would now be a single lot, and, you know, something unrelated to the structures in this area, you know, this current lot, you know, on the other side of the property later could, you know, encumber the applicant to have to come back. Although, Jim, is that not the standard language of a standard special permit?
So this is something that we typically include. This is somewhat unique in that, you know, we're merging the lots after the fact that, and it's a very large lot, you know, it's wholly up to the board. And maybe it's not without prior approval, but without prior notice to the board, perhaps. And so that way you have notice if there's any substantive impact that we would need to bring them forward or notice to the building commissioner for.
But if we do something in these lots, we've got to go to informal and informal site plan review and apply for a building permit. So, I mean, just, it's, you were talking about regulations and unnecessary regulations earlier. I think this is unnecessary. If it's allowed as of right, we should be able to do it, and if not, we have to come back to you.
Jim, is there a requirement to have that language in, in this special permit?
No, it's not a requirement.
In fact, my last time before the zoning board, they took that one out for me.
So let me get a sense of the board to see if people have strong feelings.
I'm sorry?
Let me get a sense of the board.
Absolutely, thank you.
To see if people have strong feelings. So the question I have for the board is, does anyone object to granting Mr. Kenny's request to strike condition five? Matt?
No, I do not.
Michael?
I do not.
Mary?
No, I'm fine. I'm fine. I don't need it because I do believe that if it's not by right, you have to come back to us anyway.
Tim?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. So I'm okay with it. So then, I'll grant your request to strike number five, and numbers six and seven will be renumbered five and six.
Jeez, I should have asked for all of them.
Yeah. Don't pressure luck.
Right.
Bob, a quick question, or maybe to Jim?
Sure.
Is it the understanding of the special permit, that a condition of the permit should in fact be the elimination of the internal lot line? Is that a condition? Is that part of what was site plan review had expected? Because obviously this doesn't work unless that line gets erased.
Yeah, that's covered by number, the condition number four, informal site plan review conditions of approval are hereby incorporated.
If it's covered there, then we don't need to restate it.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Okay. Yep. Thank you.
So motions on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Michael, seconds. So the motions for the board, Matt?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Thank you, Mr. Kenny. You have your special permit.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays, everybody.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, moving right along. Apparently, there's a chapter 91 notice, 150 Bay Road, Katuut, Shoestring Bay, Han. It's the party, it pretends to appear, ramp and a float. Jim, do you have a staff update you want to make on the LCPC?
Yes.
Right back there.
The LCPC will be meeting again this Thursday. We'll be discussing further the land use chapter that had a real great mapping exercise at their last meeting. And in addition, I believe we will begin to introduce the topic of the housing chapter, and specifically the housing production plan. So it should be a good discussion on Thursday night. And if I may, real quick, one other item. On Wednesday, during the day, the Hyannis Harbor Master Plan Stakeholder Meeting will take place. It's the first stakeholder meeting of a discussion of a kind of a focus, laser-focused master plan of the Hyannis Harbor. That is from 10:00 to 11:30, or 12:00 to 1:30. The planning board is welcome to either, and we'll be discussing, you know, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities of the harbor, as well as the grant that we received to work towards looking at potentially improved zoning guidelines and things such as climate change and future development in that area.
Great, thanks. Stephen mentioned that he had any matters not reasonably anticipated, nor do I, so we'll skip that. We have minutes for November 13, 2023, and the November 27, 2023, joint meeting with the Hyannis Downtown Historical Commission. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for those two meetings?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of November 13, 2023.
Thank you, Tim. Second?
I'll second that.
Second by Michael. So the motions are for, Matt?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so those minutes are approved.
I think we have one more set of minutes.
I did two.
Oh, I said only the 13th. I should have done two for one.
You want to make another motion?
I have to make another motion. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of November 27, 2023.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It's motion to the second. Matt?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that also is approved.